Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Missoula County School Board, Board of Trustees, to order. And our first item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, no, our first item is roll call. We have Anne Wake, Jennifer Newbold, Heidi Kendall, Grace Decker, Elliot Dugger, Diane Lorenzen, Mike Smith. And that is a quorum of each of the two boards. So, you got that, Lenora? Great, thanks. And now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And let Marina lead us. Also, on the roll call, I'd like to add that our Sentinel High School trustee Marina Gray is here. Thank you. Does anyone have any call under item three to review, revise, or the agenda as it's written? Okay, seeing nothing. Then, do we, excuse me. Okay, the agenda is approved as written. So, under item four is an action item. We will approve the minutes of the First to 4A, the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on January 9th, 2018. Those start on page six of the packet. Has everyone had a chance to read those? And do any trustees have corrections or additions to the minutes? Or administrators, or anybody? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 9th meeting? Moved by trustee Dugger, second by trustee Smith. Any board comment? Okay, everyone in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. The second item is to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' executive session on January 9th, 2018. Now, this is an awkward item because minutes from executive sessions are not public. We held the session, and then just following the session, Chairman Holland read to us back the minutes, and we agreed to them. So at this time, I would like us to go ahead and approve those minutes as heard. So, do we have a motion? Do you have any questions?
I have a correction.
A correction, oh, I'm sorry. Back to the other minutes?
No, that's the addendum to the other minutes.
Oh, no, we can, we can go back. I'm sorry, Megan has a...
Oh, I was gonna say, if it's a correction to the minutes of the closed meeting, we're gonna have to convene an executive session.
The only thing that's wrong is the date. It says 2017. That's it.
How did we all miss that? Okay, so that was for the addendum to the minutes of the regular meeting. So, the minutes to the executive session aren't written. They're not with us here today in writing. Can we approve them anyway? Megan?
They should be, they should've been provided to you.
They were reviewed when we came out of, or, at the end of executive session.
Yes, but...
They were read back to us.
You need the paper copies.
You need them in paper. Okay, so, this time I suggest we table item 4B.
Need a motion to?
Yeah, Mike?
I think we table.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Do you have a second? Second trustee Decker. Okay, so we have tabled agenda item 4B because we don't have those minutes in writing. So, moving on to agenda item number five, which is public comment and correspondence. 5A, we have a time for public comment regarding non-agenda items. So, this is, well, there's Melanie, and she knows the rules.
...try to abide by them. Good evening, Melanie Charles, and President, Missoula Education Association, Vice President, MEA MFT, for the moment. I wanted to give you a quick update on our NEA grant-funded projects that have been moving forward. Next week, Superintendent Thane, Dave Rot, Jenny Malloy, and myself will travel to Portland and meet with the four other locals and districts to discuss work that we've completed since our last meeting in Chicago. We had a variety of assignments to complete, four different tasks, in-depth items to follow. We've been sharing those via webinars with the other districts, each of us taking a lead on a variety of tasks. And we'll meet for two days, two and a half days, I believe, in Portland, and then get some additional assignments prior to another meeting later on in the spring. One of the items we've been working on is new educator listening sessions for our new two MCPS hires, those specifically who joined us in this past August. So, we've held three of those listening sessions, and, excuse me, two of those, and our third will be tomorrow evening. They've been really quite enlightening and delightful, and we were hoping for strong attendance each time. There's a lot going on. So, the second one, we had improved attendance from the first, and tomorrow we're hoping for a nice-sized group as well. So, we're hearing them about what successes they've had, where they've felt supported in a variety of aspects of their job, and what we might do to enhance that as we move forward. So, we've welcomed yesterday into the Teaching and Learning Department the two new grant-funded mentor-coaches, Brittany Kileman and Lindsay Morse. They are up and ready to roll, and so we're excited to see the next phase into this grant project. The next item is this last weekend, MEA MFT and the Montana Public Employees Association voted to merge. So, we will be 25,000 members strong, and trustee Kendall reminded me she's now a union sister of ours, will be known as the Montana Federation of Public Employees. And officially, the fiscal year for us would begin September 1st, so we're kind of in that transition phase. So, I may go back and forth between MEA MFT and MFP, just more educational alphabets. So, thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. Does anyone else have public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you. Then, item 5B is written correspondence, which is included in the packet on page 14. You guys can read that. Item 6A, we have student trustee reports, and I believe we had those two weeks ago. So, I don't think we intend to have them, but thanks for being here. 6B is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report, which is included in our packet. It's a routine report for the month of December 2017, and that's on page 15 of our packet. We have a written high school activities fall report for 2017, and that's on page 16 of the packet. There's no oral report, but do any trustees have any questions about the high school report or comments? Okay. It's hard being the chair, you can't look. Okay. So, number, so 6D are announcements from trustee, oh, sorry, from Superintendent Mark Thane. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 17 of the packet contains a list of items, and there are two corrections. First, there will not be school K-12 to recognize Presidents' Day on Monday, February 19th. That says that the administrative offices will remain open, and that's an error. We're closed on that holiday. Farther down the list, we're already thinking about the next set of parent-teacher conferences. And in the K-8 buildings, they're scheduled on the calendar for Thursday, March 8th, and Friday, March 9th. Thursday, March 8th is a half-day for students. We'll begin conferences officially that afternoon. However, many schools actually trade time and do conferences in evening hours instead of the Friday date that's listed, and that's an effort to accommodate working families. So, on the 8th of March, there will be a half-day of school. There will be no school on Friday, the 9th of March. We will have our next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, February 13th. We will have a couple sets of school visitations coming up. Friday, February 2nd, trustees are invited to view the Willard and the Hellgate facilities. On Thursday, February 22nd, trustee visits are scheduled for CS Porter, Meadow Hill, and Washington Middle School. On Wednesday, March 7th, then trustee visits are scheduled for Jefferson and Dickinson, Lifelong Learning Center. Melanie already talked about the NIC Center's work, so I won't belabor that, but simply say we're excited to continue our collaboration and our work on that project. And we have had some conversation about polling trustees to establish a date for a work session. Oftentimes, we find at the board meetings that the agenda items come forth and the conversation is maybe somewhat muted. So, there are a few items we would like to bring forward to have the trustees engage in some more robust, free-flowing conversation. So, I will be asking Lenora to poll trustees in the coming days with regard to some potential dates for a trustee work session. And that concludes my report.
Do any trustees have any questions for Superintendent Thane about the report? I do. The work session, now that would be an open meeting. It's publicly available, there's just no action items, correct?
That's correct. It would be noticed, and we would notice the topics that would be discussed, but we would not have recommendations for action. It would just be an opportunity for trustees to come together and discuss those specific topics. Public is certainly invited.
And then the other, I guess it's me talking to the trustees. The trustee building visit, Superintendent Thane said we're invited. I would put that stronger than that. We're really required by law to make building visits. We have a lot of buildings, and I know it's difficult, but it's always rewarding when we do make the time to go to those, so I encourage you to do that. Okay, and then item 6E is announcements from the trustees. Does anyone want to make an announcement about any topic of interest to you as trustees? All right, I still don't see anybody making eye contact with me. Okay. Okay. Item seven is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are typically routine items that we see every meeting, sometimes every two weeks, and we don't discuss, the trustees don't discuss them, although the public is allowed to comment on them. So, our first, so consent agenda items would defeat the purpose if we talked about them separately. So, the finance and operations, we have, we will approve student attendance agreements, which we see regularly. They're on page 20 of your packet. Item two, we will approve revenue and expenditure reports, which are on page 21 of your packet. They show the December 2017 revenue and expenditure reports. The warrants, which means the checks are available for review in the business office at any time by the trustees. Oh, I guess we will take these separately. So, first, do we have a motion from a trustee to approve the MCPS attendance agreements on page 20 of the packet? Moved by trustee Kendall, second by trustee Newbold. And now, are there any, well, we don't really, you can't make specific comments, you make general comments. Do we have any trustee comments? Seeing none, all trustees in...
Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any public comment? Okay. All trustees in favor of approving the MCPS student attendance agreements, please signify by raising your hand? And that's unanimous? Oh, sorry. Our second item is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports. So, do we have a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure reports? Moved by trustee Smith, second by trustee Dugger?
Yeah.
Dugger? Any public comment? Any board comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of approving the revenue and expenditure reports, please raise your hand? That's unanimous. Okay, now, and item eight, this is something we haven't seen a lot of recently on our agenda, which is old business. And the idea behind putting things on the old business was that we could talk about them a little bit. There's no action item attached to them. They're just things we've talked about before and that we will talk about again, but tonight we're gonna talk about items under the old business heading. And so, the first one, item 8A, is under finance, operations, and maintenance, and it's a, it's a property update. And I actually requested this one, and any trustee that wants something on old business in future meetings, I think, can, can request, and we can just relax. And since there's no agenda item, we don't, we aren't gonna accidentally approve something, you know? And so, under this item, I requested this one because I want us to be very conversant around our properties. And so, in your, in your packet, you have a copy of a map identifying all district-owned properties, and it's up here. In the packet, it's black and white. You got emailed it in color, and Mark has it up on the, up on the board. And why this is important to me is because I think it's really important that as trustees, that we set our agenda around these items. I think if we don't set our agenda around properties, somebody's gonna set it for us. I think someone will come into us with an offer, and instead of talking about what we as trustees want to do, we will simply be reacting to someone else's proposal. So, the first step, I think, with real estate, we know, is location, and so I think we just need to talk about our properties and where they are, and how they're used, or if they're leased, and I think Mark's, or Superintendent Thane's gonna lead us through that.
I'll just do my best Vanna White quickly. As was referenced, we do have a link to this map available for you so that you can peruse it later. It's a lot easier to see in this format. First property, of course, is Seeley Swan High School, and that's the insert that's reflected on the map. I think we're all familiar with that location. There are a number of properties. It's a little difficult to identify, I think, from the back, but starting from the north, properties in the Rattlesnake area. We have those fields that are used for the Hellgate soccer and softball. We have the Duncan Drive property, which is currently used with Garden City Harvest. Actually, the pointers don't work on this screen, so. Rattlesnake Elementary School. We also have Prescott Elementary School in the Rattlesnake, which is currently closed as a public school and is a leased facility. Out in the east Missoula area, we have Mount Jumbo Elementary School, which was most recently used as swing space for Lowell. It was formerly a K-8, then ultimately a K-6, and finally a K-5, and then at one point served just K-1, 2 before consolidation in the Rattlesnake area. MCPS owns the Whittier School on Missoula's north and west side. It's currently leased by Head Start. Lowell Elementary, you're all familiar with, just went through construction and rebuild. Many people in the public may not recognize that West Side Park, which is adjacent to Lowell Elementary, is actually MCPS property. We have a long-term lease agreement with the city, so it's dual-purpose. It serves as the playground for Lowell Elementary while students are present, but is also utilized as a public park outside of school hours. You should cross the river. An interesting piece of property, Tool Park. Of course, right along the Clark Fork River is the Riverwalk Trail. You'll see the football field down there for Hellgate practices. That represents one-third of the field. A portion of the field is also owned by the city and a portion by the county. So, cooperative use agreement in order to make use of our portion of that parcel. You're all familiar with Hellgate High School. The 6th Street Administration Building is two blocks from Hellgate High School. It was the original Roosevelt School. Willard Alternative High School, also on 6th Street. Willard is currently owned as an elementary property. We're utilizing it in the high school district for the alternative high school program. Emma Dickinson School on Curtis Street is, again, a former K-8, then K-5 school. It's now being utilized by adult education programs. Hawthorne Elementary, also on 3rd Street. We're in the process right now of hiring the contractor for the renovation and expansion at Hawthorne. Also serving that area, we have Franklin Elementary School. It also just went through a complete rebuild. CS Porter Middle School on Reserve Street. I'll scroll down a little bit so you can get a better view of those. See if I can get them all there. Yes. CS Porter Middle School, Big Sky High School on South Avenue. What's interesting about them is they're both right out about on our district boundaries. So, this area, which is South Avenue and Reserve Street, is actually Target Range School District. So, Porter's only one block away from our district boundary. The high school district is right on the corner of our elementary district boundary, but of course serves that area also. We have property that's listed here as Voag property. This property is a little bit less distinguishable as they're rebuilding the Fort Missoula property and upgrading it. You'll notice that there is a bit of pasture land by the old cemetery, the old veteran cemetery, that MCPS owns directly across from Big Sky High School. And then, of course, our vocational agricultural property is located out on South Avenue. The current Cold Springs Elementary School off of Brig Street. Jeanette Rankin Elementary will actually be along the river in the Miller Creek area. Cold Springs is about two and a half blocks from Meadow Hill Middle School, which is on Reserve Street. Reserve Street takes a funny jog there, but the address is still Reserve Street. Jefferson School currently houses our preschool programs. It's located on South Avenue. Also on South Avenue, we have a conglomeration of properties here. We've got across the street what's often referred to as Homavale or Casa Loma, and of course Sentinel High School is on this property. We also own the property that's immediately to the south of us here. The business building would be located in this area also, and then what was formerly the Missoula College. This area is Russell Elementary School, so big district property in this area. Lewis and Clark Elementary, way up high on the mountain, and to give you a little perspective... Chief Charlo, of course, sits fairly high up on the hill. If you go just about due east, we own acreage that's referred to on this map as 55th Street. It's also sometimes referred to as Heaven's Gate. That's up by Shadows Keep Restaurant. Shadows Keep is right up in this area, so way up at the top of the hill. In addition to Chief Charlo, we hold a parcel property out in Linda Vista. It's sandwiched between Maryland Park and a county parcel. And then, of course, if you were to continue out lower Miller Creek Road, you would get along the river here to the site of the new Jeanette Rankin Elementary School. So, as trustee Lorenzen indicated, she had an interest as we broached the subject of properties in a couple previous meetings, talking about the IDIQ process for Realtors, just making sure the trustees had a good sense of the properties that we did hold in the district. This map was generated for the Smart Schools 2020 project. I like it because it combines the elementary and secondary properties, and everything's appropriately labeled. If you refer back to Smart Schools 2020, there was actually some fairly extensive conversation about those properties that are not currently in use as school properties. And that conversation didn't lead to formal recommendations, but if you look through the Smart Schools 2020, there are potential recommendations associated with each of those properties. So, with that, if you have any questions too, I'd be happy to try and address them.
So, do any trustees have any, any points they want to make or questions they'd like to ask about the properties that, at this time? Trustee Smith?
And Mark, I'll just kind of spring this on you. Maybe this will be for an update for a later thing, but we've had, a few years ago, we had an update on all of our leased properties. And, you know, when the leases are up, kind of the terms and stuff like that, I think that would be another useful piece of information as we move forward, just kind of look at things. So, if we could put that on your list. Thank you.
And I think this might be a topic for the work session. I think the, the things that I want to see us do, I think first we have to set a timeline. And that's more of a discussion of the board, and why are we trustees of this land, and what is our, you know, what's our timeline? I would suggest 80 years. I think any, any thought of what we're gonna do has to take into account what's Missoula gonna look like 80 years from now, where are children gonna go to school, are they gonna have bicycles, is, or cars, is housing gonna be more densely populated? So, the one thing I'd like to see is set, since these are technically investments, we need to talk about timeline before we ever talk about what else we're gonna do. And another concern I have, we've been sort of batting around a list of four properties, and one of those properties is not like the other. Three are vacant properties in the south side, and one is almost downtown and has a historic building on it. So, I want us, in the future, to be very knowledgeable about which properties we talk about together. And I don't know, you know, I'm following what's going on in Bozeman. They have a, what I think people thought was a city park called the Emerson Lawn, and it's all of a sudden for sale. And I don't know if the board said, "We want to sell it, public, we're gonna sell it, it won't be a lawn anymore," or if they were just sitting there and a proposal arrived. And that's where I don't want us to be. I don't want us to, to go, instead of having a conversation from our point of view, to have to react to a proposal for development. This would be like if we took the West Side Park and sold it for development. It would be a huge decision to make. It's not simply a matter of dollars, how much dollars can we get? So, and the other thing I want us to know is we can lease property. We don't have to sell property if we, we don't pay taxes. So, if property is vacant, it doesn't cost us anything. Certainly, if there's a building on it, and the building is vacant, that has a cost to us. So, I want us to make very informed decisions, and I want, I'd like to see the board control our agenda on this one. I think it'd be really easy, we start talking to real estate developers and, and real estate agents, to lose, to lose our decision point of even, is it even for sale? And this is what worried me, I guess, when we started asking, "How much could we get if we sold it?" I think that was premature because the first question is, "Is that for sale at any price?" So, I'd like to see us in the future, and it'll have to be agenda items, of course, to address each property individually, you know, why do we own it, why would we keep it, why would we sell it, is it for sale, and what would we do with the proceeds? So, that's really why I wanted this brought forward. So, does anybody have anything else? Trustee Kendall?
I guess this is a question to get at a little bit more precisely what your vision is for this. Do you envision that we would come up with some sort of a product, a document, called 80-Year Plan for MCPS Properties, or something like that? And we would, you know, through some sort of public process, and then our own judgment and discussion, we would come up with something that would be, I mean, it, I don't know how you do things that are binding in that way, you know, in the future, but something that could be, you know, reconsidered periodically, you know, every five or 10 years or something? Is that kind of what you're thinking about?
Well, I think that would be an excellent plan, I think, because we have done planning, but it was pretty short timeframe, it was five to 10 years. Where do the kids live now? What do schools look like now? So, yeah, I would like to see us, I'd like to see the board lay out a long-term plan that is, can be visited as, you know, trustees will leave the board, other trustees will be elected, maybe some will have a different point of view, but I think that the thing that's most protective of the public trust is transparency. So, I think the most important thing we can do is make sure that we lay out what the projects are, what we're thinking about, so that we don't all of a sudden surprise the public when something, they find out something's for sale that they didn't even know wasn't a city park or something. Trustee, oh, trustee Smith?
I, I think this is a great topic for discussion. As, as I'm thinking about what Heidi was kind of mentioning and stuff, I, I think about what has happened in the past, and it's real hard to see what's gonna happen in 60 years. I know the 55th and Whittaker property, way up on top of the hill, was, was purchased with the thought that, "Oh, Missoula's growing, and it's growing in that direction, that's the way it's gonna go." And now you cannot build up there. So, I mean, obviously, things change, and that's gonna change the outlook as we go along. I think it's real important, in both the short term and the long term, to kind of have the, the discussion of, of what is important that you were mentioning, Diane. I think it's, it's, it's not just whether something's for sale, whether it's not for sale. I mean, we are entrusted with overseeing our property and, and that being a very important part, but we also have fiscal responsibilities, and we just went to the taxpayers a few years ago and asked them for $150 million, and some people were saying, "Well, you're asking for $150 million, but you've got these assets that are sitting there that you're not, you know, turning into liquidating so that you're not gonna hit my taxes as much." So, that's gonna be part of the discussion, I hope, and I think it will be. What was the other thing I was gonna say? I forget, I'll come back to it. I forget, I'll come back to it. I had another point.
Trustee Decker?
I know when you are thinking about the idea of making thorny decisions in the future with lots of complex ramifications that we can't even predict, it's really useful to have principles or guidelines that help you make those decisions. And my guess would be that we're not the first school board to wrestle with these kind of questions. And I wonder if the Montana School Board Association or other national bodies have ethical frameworks or guidelines or some kind of support and development for this board that would be really useful in going forward to make these kinds of decisions? Help us know what even to ask?
Thanks.
I'm trustee Newble. I appreciate you bringing this up, especially for a work session, because I think these are important questions. The one thing I'm wondering about is when we are considering very far into the future. I know we've done some projections as part of the Smart Schools 2020 study about what demographics, population, where it's going to be centered and those sorts of things will look like. I can't recall how far into the future or where specifically we looked at, if we looked at all of Missoula, but I'm just throwing it out there for, I guess, discussion, ideas on how we figure out what Missoula looks like 80 years from now. That's a pretty daunting question, I think.
Yeah, and I just, I have actually thought about that and I, you know, we could ask the kids at the college. I really think this is an area that the university could help us because they've got the history of Missoula, they've got a lot of students that may be willing to pick this up and help us make those projections. I honestly can't, don't know if they have an urban studies program, but you know, they might have a good fit over there. A trustee Decker?
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiment about looking at this from the 30,000-foot point of view. To the point that was made about who's looking at this on a larger scale, I can tell you that, and I can't give you specifics right now without going back and rereading some of the stuff I've been reading recently on charter schools. But some of the larger charter organizations look at this kind of data all the time because one of their arguments for charter schools is the demise of the neighborhood school because of demographic changes in a community where you get pockets of poverty and pockets of wealth. And all of a sudden you have, within the same school system, you have division of resources, not because anybody intended it, but because it happens. You know, you have a higher crime rate over here, and of course, Mark, I think, is actually really good at this, at focusing on trying to bring the same education to every school. And I think you try very hard to do that. And that's long-sighted, because when you have, you know, your property spread out like in the community that we live in today, it seems pretty appropriate to do that. And the only thing that maintains the appropriateness of doing that is by maintaining the education level in every school, no matter where it's located. But the naysayers to that, the naysayers to the neighborhood school would argue that that doesn't work, that it's a failed system, that we had 50 years to do that and now we have, within the same school systems, we have inequality because of demographics we couldn't control or we didn't watch out for, we didn't look for, which is the point of being long-sighted. So I think what you do is rather than having data drive your vision, is that you have a vision that drives the data you collect. And that's what you guys have been talking about. So, yeah, we can't predict 80 years from now, but we can track it as close as we go as possible if you have a guideline that says we need to be looking for these kinds of things. So that says, okay, well, I need data that will answer this question. So then the people, the board, the administrative faculty or the administrative staff are then allocating resources to collect that kind of data, that kind of demographic data from year to year to see what the trends are and what the changes are. So that instead of trailing behind all the time and letting people, you know, say, well, that didn't work, if you're ahead of the game a little bit by doing that, by having that long-term plan, then you can zig and zag accordingly and stay on top of it all the time. So, yeah, it would be interesting to see what some of those organizations that are chasing the same kind of thing, that are trying to create a whole different school system within a school system via charters, to see what they're looking at, you know, that drives their argument of the way to go is to consolidate into something other than what we've had in the past so that we can provide that same education for everybody, but to do it, you got to come through this door, you know? And what we want to do is say, no, we can put it at every door. And so property is a huge issue when you're talking about that because where this land is, is where you have your resources to put students. So that's, I know that was long-winded, but I think this will be a great discussion for a work session.
Thanks Elliot. Trustee Smith?
I think with regards to data and available information, there's a lot of available information out there. I've got actually a copy of the demographics and location analysis that was done for us in 2013. I believe the population consensus, we looked out 10 years at that time. What these things can tell us, and in Missoula, we have a unique situation in that we are physically bounded by mountains and rivers and whatnot. We don't have kind of the tendency to sprawl that you might see in a Denver or an Bozeman area where it's flat and it's just too easy to sprawl out. Missoula's also doing a pretty good job of trying to control growth, where it's going to go. There's Missoula Growth Plans. We also have Realtors Associations that we have, we can look at Housing Starts. I've got in that demographic analysis from four years ago that we looked at multi-dwelling building, new permitted units for multi-dwelling units, duplex units, single dwelling units, where they were broke the city down into sections and it's really, it's a lot of information. As I said before though, and as has been echoed out here, when we take this information, we could look at what we looked at four years ago and see how close we were. And we may have been pretty close or we may have been, you know, not too bad. I think we were okay. Anybody who predicted growth before 2008, you know, two years prior to that probably had their predictions somewhat turned upside down, as we know, you know, so anything can happen. But there certainly are things that we can look at. And if we're going to have this discussion, I think, and this kind of goes towards what trustee Douglas was saying, is we can get it, we can get the information. So we can be informed in making some of these things. The other thing I just wanted to echo was that 30,000-foot view and guidelines, I don't know who was saying that, but I like the idea of, if we can put down what we're thinking as we move forward and look 80 years in the future, I think that's important because I would love to have the visions of 40 years ago when we built all the schools. One thing that I would like to come out of this whole discussion, if we're talking about property, and that is, and I've been thinking about this for some time, I just don't know how to kind of get into the conversation, maybe this work session might be the place to do it, is one of our big problems in this bond, when we went through this issuance of these huge bonds and the city of Missoula and the taxpayers were great enough to, and forward-thinking enough and looking enough to let us kind of do this. I don't want to have the next people, you know, my grandchildren or whatever, 50 years from now, 60 years from now, go through the same thing. So I would like to have some kind of way where we could suggest, or you know, 20 years from now, 10 years, five years, just, what are these projects that we don't end up with $8 million of deferred maintenance in four high school buildings or whatever the numbers ended up being? So again, probably more long-winded, but Diane, I'm not going to call this a can of worms, I'm going to call it a can of flowers. Okay? Or a can of flower spray or something, but I think it's a great discussion to have. So thank you for bringing it up.
Anything else for now? Okay, well, thank you. That's what I hoped we would see if we just could talk. And I know a work session, it's a big project and, you know, we all have to decide if we're going to run again, Grace. Oops, sorry, that wasn't on the agenda. But you know, it is hard. You get on here for three years and it takes you two and a half to figure out what, where your passions lie. And so part of what I, so, and part of what I'm hoping we can do is bring forward what everyone's interested in. And so our second topic then for tonight, we've been talking early start time. I know trustee Kendall is really interested in that in a broader sense and we've gained a lot of information. And so superintendent Sane's going to give us an update on early start time, which of course ties right into the buses, which ties back to the question of where the students live, so.
Thank you. And just a brief refresher, last year we convened a committee to study the, all the issues attendant to high school start times in particular. The interest being in exploring what the research had to say about student sleep patterns, about chronic sleep deprivation that's been recognized by a number of medical entities and to see what it would take in Missoula if there was will to do so, to consider different start time for high school. One of the things that I found really intriguing about the committee, we brought together a group that represented a variety of different perspectives. And I don't know that I've ever seen a group coalesce around a single recommendation quite like this group did. It was clear from the research that was conducted that there's a lot of evidence to support the idea of a later high school start time. The big challenge, I think, for us is then, how do you make that actually come to pass? And what we have in Missoula right now with transportation is what's known as a three-tiered transportation system. So if you conceive of the Missoula County High Schools serving all students that reside within Missoula County, with the exception of those that attend Frenchtown, you've got a huge geographic area to serve. So the way our transportation works is buses leave the bus garage very, very early, go to the outer reaches of the county, begin collecting students to deliver them to our high schools. So that's the first run. And they drop at those high schools right now at about 7:25 to 7:30 a.m. That affords them the time then to cycle back around and utilize all those buses to run the elementary and middle school routes. So many of those buses will cycle, run a middle school route, drop students, then cycle a third time and run an elementary route and drop those students at their schools. So there's a tremendous efficiency that's gained by using three tiers of transportation with a single bus. So we recognize that if we alter our start times, there's capacity there to have significant changes in our transportation. It would in fact be required. We use some transportation software, some routing software that's generated by a corporation named TransFinder. So with the board's direction, we contracted with TransFinder to conduct a bus study for us. And we did some original sharing of data. They then went into the system and uploaded all our routes, all our times, all our bell times in the schools. And then we, over the course of some conversations, identified essentially five different options with different sets of parameters that we wanted them to explore, to see if we could determine what it would take in order to affect a later start time. The bottom line is that in all scenarios, you have to eliminate the three-tier system. The best you can come up with a two-tier system. And if you think about it, it makes sense because if you have a later high school start time, in order for those buses to get to the outer reaches of the county and get students back in, they can't run an elementary or middle school route first without creating a huge separation in time. So the parameters that we established varied in each of the options, but the option that came closest to matching what we wanted to accomplish, which was a start time of after 8:30 a.m., in fact, it was an 8:40 a.m. start time. And in order to create a separation, starting the elementary and middle schools at approximately 8:10 a.m., so creating a 30-minute window. And even at those parameters, the findings of the study would require us to add a minimum of 14 additional bus routes in order to accomplish our current level of transportation. Each bus route has a cost of $44,000 annually. So the cost on the least costly option of the five that were explored would be $616,000 annually in additional transportation cost. So at this point in time, obviously, the board needs to weigh in on the costs associated with the benefit, the return on investment. I would suggest to you that there's obviously still compelling evidence that supports a later high school start time. I would also suggest to you that this is not a topic that we want to put to rest with any discussion we have today. I think it's something we need to keep actively working to pursue in some way, shape or form, whether it's through creative scheduling, whether it's through revision of how we transport students, changes in walk zones, changes in who we transport, et cetera, to mitigate some of those increased costs associated with transportation. But I think the message that I would have for you today, and of course, I'm looking for feedback, is that we are, we would be challenged to add $616,000 to transportation. That would be borne almost exclusively by local taxpayers. So we, I believe, need time to continue to work over the course of the next year to potentially look at the guiding principles for transportation, who we transport, why we transport, whether there's potential to alter how we do transportation, not just 912, but K-12 in the district, to afford us the opportunities to revise start and end times. So I'm open to any questions at this point in time. I just felt it was important that now that we have the results of the study, we get that information to you so that you can help provide feedback and recommendations. I would say that 14 was the fewest routes ended, or added, in order to accomplish the task. In some of the scenarios, it was as many as 26 routes added to accomplish the change in time. So we have some good data, but it's going to require some additional work.
Trustee Decker?
Was 8:40 the latest start time that was submitted to the company for consideration?
It was, and we can go back and tweak parameters. Part of the rationale for 8:40 was that gets us to a 3:40 dismissal time, which with fall and early spring activities, outdoor practices, if you have a two-hour window, you run out of daylight if you push yourself much later than that. It is possible that we could look at later times. It is possible you could look at earlier start times for K-8s also. So part of it is trying to find the sweet spots and that's part of the massaging and the work that we would have to do.
Okay. Trustee Kendall?
Do we know how many high school students get to school on the school buses?
We do. And another thing that's really interesting about us, we're not an urban area where we could say, gee, there are only six kids on this bus, we'll consolidate it with another route. The problem is you're going out to largely rural areas and we still have an obligation to transport those students. So part of what we asked them to do was an efficiency study. And that essentially altered our descriptions of walk zones, et cetera. But there are a number of geographic barriers like the rivers, the interstate. You also have some safety concerns in areas where there is what we would call roadside friction, where there's a lack of sidewalks, we've got busy streets to cross. And we as a community have expressed values about that and that's part of what's driven our transportation. So again, it would require some in-depth study, but also a great deal of local knowledge that needs to be applied to the study. It's one thing to just look at it from the 30,000-foot view, but when you start bringing all those nuances of the bus routes and the attendance areas into play, it becomes increasingly complex.
Go ahead.
Do you have a number for how many students, or like a daily census or something like that?
I'd love to put Burley on the spot, but I'm sure he doesn't have it on the top of his head.
Or can you get that?
Yes.
Might get a future meeting?
Yes, we do. And we do also know the eligible students. One of the things that happens, and again, part of this is the Montana experience, different times of the year, you'll have very different ridership. You've got eligible students who in the fall and the spring might have other means to get... the spring might have other means to get to school. Oftentimes, in the winter or during poor weather, you'll have a very different ridership experience on the bus.
Trustee Smith?
Thanks, Mark. A couple of things. I guess one thing I want to point out for folks at home and watching on TV, our huge audience, when we're talking about, like you just mentioned, eligibility, we do have sort of quasi-open enrollment for our high schools. I know that a lot of people attend high schools that are quote-unquote outside of their district. We talk about eligibility. We are still talking about only providing bus transportation for the high schools' actual area. So our buses are not making extra trips based on students that have elected to attend an out-of, sort of, area high school. That's the first point I want to make.
I would say that's generally true, but it's not completely accurate. So we also run internal transportation. So initially, those buses would go to their neighborhood high school. But we have students that might access the automotive program at Sentinel periods one and two. They might access the Ag Center. They might access the Health Science Academy at Big Sky. Those students that attend Willard Alternative High School would bus in from their geographic area to a high school and transfer to a Willard bus. So there's a complexity to it beyond that. But when parents do initiate an out-of-area request, they are told that they are responsible for student transportation.
And I guess the other thing that I just wanted to touch on is, and I, I think when we were all in, or some of us were on the committee, and I agree, that was a great committee. I think we learned a lot. I certainly learned a lot. My thinking changed over the time, over the whole period that we were studying this. I certainly, I'm not surprised it's expensive. I don't think anyone's surprised that it's going to be expensive. I think it's something that we, as a community, have got a lot of support for. I think when we first started talking about this, and we first started putting dates on action items, I was a little concerned about the short time period, and kind of if that would force our hand one way or the other. So I'm glad that we are not going to say, oh, it's too expensive, we can't do it, or, you know, we're not going to turn away from, due to the short time. So we can certainly extend it. It's not a, it's not something that we can't decide to do as a board at some other period. What I really want to do is, I want to make sure, and this, this may be after some sort of solution or change or modification has been made, I hope we're thinking as much outside the box. And I heard you say a couple of things that really, you know, made me think that way with later start times and with, you know, rolling schedules. I mean, I think we should really look at everything. We could look at extending the school year. I don't know if that's off the, a third rail that we're not allowed to talk about, or if we're, if there's other, I mean, there's got to be, you know, zero periods, plus later periods, you know. A lot of this, and it's going to involve, obviously, the teachers are, and the administration, and parents are all hugely vested in this, and we need to continue to kind of get their inputs and assistance on making these things. But I want to make sure that we're not looking at a model that is based on principles that say, well, the kids go to, all go to school at the same time in the morning, and then they, they come to school, you know, at a different time. I, I, I don't know if, and we didn't delve into the minutia in the committee, certainly, but, and I don't, I don't mean to like be throwing mud against the wall after the whole study's been going on. But there's, there's, I think that there's more options out there than what we're looking at, for one thing. I think you could look at everything from, some schools start later, some times of the year, so that kids get benefits, you know, one way. We have limitations. We could look at buying the buses, or going into some kind of deal. Beach has been such a great, Pat wants to hear that, right? But Beach has been such a great partner in all this, you know. I'm not saying, you know, buy the buses and then kick them out. I'm saying work with them and, and, you know, whether it's a way to solve some of these, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want money to be the reason that we say we can't do this. And I don't think I'm alone in saying that.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, there are some, what I would call maybe intermediate solutions that are available via the way we schedule. The concern I have about that is, there are some students who essentially would be disenfranchised because they are tied into transportation. So they might not be able to avail themselves of the same opportunities, whether it be a zero-period or an eight-period day, that other students can, because transportation is an obstacle. So I do want to be sensitive that we don't create a situation where students' opportunities are limited because of what transportation does for us. So that's number one. But I think also, number two, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we do have a 75-year relationship with Beach Transportation. And again, I think one of the things the Transfinder study did for me is it validated that, just in terms of an efficiency model, they've been very thorough, and we do have a very efficient, well-managed transportation system. That doesn't mean that there aren't things that we may need to contemplate. And I think one of the challenges we face is, we have some will to make a significant change here, but we're also on the other side of the coin, facing a loss through the special session of the legislature of the Transportation Block Grant that we used to get from the state. So we've got all these competing forces. So I think the time is ripe for us to, again, have a more global conversation, a global look. I think this is just one piece of data that will influence where we ultimately go with school day and start times.
I guess I just want to say, one thing we remember, right now, we're running diesel-fired buses. And if we take the 80-year view, is that what we're doing? You know, is that the future? We talk about sustainability. It's just something to keep in mind, you know. Is it really 20 years from now going to be diesel-fired buses that we're driving? So that's just something else to keep in mind. Heidi?
It's certainly a challenging situation, but I would echo what Mike has said about, I don't want to be in the situation of, we make this decision based on the expense, because I feel like that gets us all the way back to square one, when we, when the board asked this question previously, and the answer was, it's too expensive. So I'm wondering what you would envision as far as a timeline for some potential non-monetary solutions, I guess, and what direction you need from the board as far as, do you need direction to go back to Transfinder, to look at even later times, or what else do you need from us?
I would suggest that this is another one of the topics that we would likely want to have on a work session agenda, so that we can have some free-flowing conversation. I think going back to Transfinder is not an issue. We can work with the parameters, see if we can do some things. I would say that I think that in many respects, unless you're willing to look at who we transport, and the walk zones, and some of the things that create the transportation needs that we've previously identified, then I don't know that we're going to move the needle a whole lot. I would also say that, once we get to a point here where we're completing many of the remodels and expansions, we probably need to take a look at the whole boundary situation and say, do our boundaries make sense geographically, and do they make sense given the schools and the renovated spaces that we have available? That could also have impact on transportation. So I think there are a number of moving parts. As I said in my introduction, I'm not interested in putting this on the shelf and saying, we're done with this. I think there's a compelling reason to look at later start time. We can certainly, as high school administrators, work on their master schedules, have conversation about those accommodations. But again, I want to be very sensitive to not making those accommodations available only to those who can afford their own cars or live in close proximity to the school. I think we have to be sensitive to that. But to a degree, we have some of that latitude now. We have that via zero periods, eighth periods, digital academy courses, assignment of senior study halls, et cetera. So I think there are some things we can do in the short term. They don't have the level of impact that we would like to have, but I think we are going to need additional time and dedicated conversation about, systemically, what we could do to make a wholesale change.
Trustee Kendall?
I think there have been some really good things said here, and I really would love to have this discussed further. I agree with Mike and Jennifer that it's really important for us not to let go of this right now, and keep it on the front burner. The, you know, the health and educational reasons for doing this are so very compelling, that it really is part of our mission as a school district to figure out how to do this. And that was the conclusion that the committee came to, and that the school board voted to do unanimously. So it is challenging, absolutely, but we have a long history of facing and overcoming challenges, and I'm sure that we will also overcome this one. I mean, a couple of the things that I could throw out right now, and I'm sure others have other specific ideas too, we can get Mountain Line at the table and have them, you know, help figure this out. There is a really good car pooling system in Missoula County and Ravalli County, Mr. TMA, the Missoula-Ravalli, well, what is it, Anne?
Transportation Association.
Transportation Management. Thank you. Those are two ideas that, that we could use. There are lots of other ways of thinking outside the box. The sustainability issue is, is a really good one. Maybe the school district could buy some bicycles that kids could borrow, you know. Who knows? But I really like the idea of having, you know, a charrette or something, where we could keep talking about this and bringing in as many ideas as we can, just expand the, you know, the wealth of ideas so that we can figure out how to do this.
Thank you. I think that was an excellent summary. So we'll, oh, there was Mike. Nope, no Mike.
I was just going to say, 80 years from now, we're going to be dealing with the Beach teleportation system, I think. So that's going to save us a lot of space on the roads.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes our old business. I hope people weren't bored, but I think, I feel so important that we, as trustees, can talk to each other at the meetings, not just be on action items. So now we move into new business. What, oh, public comment. Come on, we have loads of time. Okay. Oh, thank you.
I won't take much time at all. I was interested to hear the results of the study, and, oh, my name is Jenny Dixon. Thank you. A chapter leader of Start School Later, Missoula. And I do want to let you know that, well, first of all, I appreciate that, that it's not the end of the discussion. And as part of Start School Later, a national organization, many, many school districts around the country have confronted this problem and solved it in, in one way or another. And with a little bit of time, I may be able to dig up some information about how other school districts have addressed this problem. I also appreciate the discussion about going back to Beach, or going back to Transfinder, and maybe changing the parameters a little bit, because it will be, it's going to be a balance of priorities. I mean, maybe school does get out at 4 o'clock and not 3:40, for good reason. So I just want to let you know that I think that there's more information than I may be able to provide, and we'll stay in contact with the school board and the school superintendent. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so now we'll move into new business. Our first new business item is 9A. It's an approval for, a call for school election for elementary trustees. It's a resolution, and Pat McHugh will explain that to us.
Thank you. So this is an annual item that the board sees. It's our, or the board's resolution calling for a school election for trustee election. It, for the elementary, on page 32, you'll see the, the resolution. Looks a little bit different. This is the OPI County Election Office recommended format, so it references the voting location as the election office, and then the election judges. But otherwise, it's identifying the election as a mail ballot election, and the date of the election on the 8th of, of May. I don't have any further to add.
Do any trustees have questions for Mr. McHugh? Mike?
This does look a little different than what we've seen in the years past, and not that I've memorized it by a long shot, but my, my quick question is just about the, I know that the last elections that we've had have mailed, and there seem to have been more than one location for drop-off. This isn't limiting that by any way, right?
It's not. Thanks for bringing that up. This is just to comply with what the requirements are. So we list the County Elections Office at the recommendation of both the election office and OPI.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion from an elementary trustee to approve Resolution 2018-8E. Moved by trustee Kendall, second, second by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Is there, is it public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we will vote on this motion. All trustees in favor of approv, all elementary trustees in favor of approving Resolution 2018-8E, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, the second item of new business then is 9A2, which is the same, similar situation for the high school district, the difference being that our high school district is actually divided into sub-districts. So Pat will explain that.
Thank you. So the districts that are represented on the ballot in the high school this year will be the District B and C, and these are the Hellgate Elementary District and the Target Range?
Target Range.
Bonner, thank you. So the trustees that occupy that, those seats right now are Chairperson Holland and trustee Bragstad. Otherwise, it's a similar resolution calling for the election, identifying the date and the location and election judges.
Does the trustee, oh, have any questions for Pat? Karen? She was waving around. Okay, seeing no questions, then I would entertain a motion that we approve this, this resolution. Any trustee? Moved by trustee Newble, second by trustee Decker. Any board discussion about the motion? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving Resolution 2018-6S, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, so our next new business is also finance, item A3, and this is a call for an elementary general fund levy resolution. We need to adopt the resolution, and we can cancel it if we choose later. So Pat will explain that.
Thank you, and that's exactly correct. So the parameters for, for calling the resolution for a general fund levy election is required to happen 70 days in advance of the election. So this is presented before you as a resolution. We'll discuss a little bit later the general fund outlook for next year. But a significant step in that process is the enrollment counts, and we have one more count that begins February 5th. That, that count will help put our budget picture more in focus, including the, what the levy might look at, look like. The school funding formula, including the enrollment counts, very much dictates our budgets and what is, is allowed as an operating levy. And so we'll talk a little bit about those estimates, but right now, the resolution simply calls for that general fund levy election.
Are there any questions for Pat? Okay, this is an elementary resolution, so do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve a resolution number 2018-9E? Moved by trustee Smith, second by trustee Kendall. Now, are there any, is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Just one thing to remember before you leave, we need to sign these for Pat. Okay, all, all elementary trustees in favor of approving this resolution, please raise your hand.
Did you get a public comment?
I did, sorry. Public comment? Okay. All right, there we go. All elementary trustees in favor? And that's unanimous. The next item, if you could, go ahead, Pat, is the same, only on the high school side?
Exactly. So the similar resolution on the high school side, So the similar resolution on the high school side, we'll talk a little bit more about the projections for the two thousand nineteen general fund and what the levy will look like. But as with the elementary, we're anticipating the availability of an operating levy based upon our calculations, which will be further refined once we do our February enrollment count. But at this point, this resolution authorizes the calling of the election.
Any questions for Pat? Do we have a motion from any trustee to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash seven S? Moved by trustee Duggar, second by trustee Newble? Any board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of approving this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, so the next item is just an informational item about the budget and election calendar. Is that Pat or?
Thank you, and thanks for the reminder for trustees to sign those resolutions tonight. The page thirty-six has a budget deadlines, notable dates, and a calendar reflecting board meetings in connection both with the elections and with our budget adoptions, which occur in August of this year. I think that if you look through the deadlines near the top, you'll just see the dates that are identified for when candidates can file. That data's, deadline is March twenty-ninth. The opportunity to file has been open since December fourteenth. The April fifth is a deadline for candidates to withdraw and deadlines for write-in candidates. Following that deadline on April sixth is when the board will meet and, or actually that night, April fifth, will meet in a special session to talk about the ballot language and to certify ballots. The deadline is April sixth. And then you'll note the mailing of the ballots on the eighteenth, the election date on May eighth, and then the schedule for canvassing the ballots and for seating new trustees and the board reorganization as part of a special board meeting in May. So just wanted to sort of outline what were the roadmap for where the board would be going with respect to these elections and also including our budget adoption date there in August.
Thank you, Pat. Any board questions for Pat on this issue? Trustee Smith?
No comment. I just wanted to thank Pat for putting this together. It really pleased me, and I first appreciate it.
Is there any public comment? Okay, I think we can move on then to the next item, which is also financial related. It's the, where are we? The expenditure update on page forty-five? Well, those are really sad. Okay, budget projections, page thirty-seven.
All right, so page thirty-seven, these were the budget projections that I was referencing. And what you'll notice on the document on page thirty-seven is that I've identified some projections both for the elementary and the secondary, and this is for two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen. The top area where I'm identifying based upon our enrollment count in October, what we're projecting as what we could adopt as a budget for two thousand nineteen. Our general fund budgets are significantly impacted by our enrollment count and by the changes in the school funding formula, including the inflationary increases. So for two thousand nineteen, the inflationary increase is one point eight seven percent. And the legislature had anticipated a two point two seven percent increase, or two point two three percent increase. Thank you. Two point three seven percent increase overall and reduce the first year increase to point five percent. That's for this year, two thousand eighteen. So a larger portion of the inflationary increase happens in two thousand nineteen, and then we have some enrollment bumps that are also reflective in our projection. So the highest budget without a vote is the amount of the budget that we could adopt without, it would be under the highest allowable budget. The highest allowable budget would involve a voted levy in the elementary of two hundred and seventy-two thousand four thirty-six, and in the high school of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand three seventy-nine. And so that's sort of the starting point, looking at our budgets for next year, what our budget picture could look like in terms of revenue. We then compare it to where we're at this year and look at the potential increase to those budgets. In the elementary, it's about one point three million, and the high school about five hundred and sixty thousand. When we contemplate balancing next year, we have to look at our salary and benefit obligations. To help cover that, we look at our, the increase in the budget, but also we look at retiree savings in the certified and classified staff. And right now, we're just making some projections, some estimates of retirees. How that works, I think we've talked about it before, but in the certified area, we look at positions and individuals that replace retirees and where they typically, on average, fall on the salary schedule, and it's usually a savings of about twenty-two thousand dollars, which is then reinvested, if you will, in the budget in the form of covering these various increases in salaries and benefits. After looking at the salary and benefit obligations, we're, from a projection standpoint, looking to the good in the elementary and down about a hundred and fifteen in the high school. The elementary, we're looking at additional staff, given our enrollment picture. Five is estimated here at a total cost of about two hundred and sixty thousand. We have some other anticipated obligations, some of which are listed without dollar amounts next to it, but just kind of placeholders, but then some with some estimated figures. So it's early in the process, just trying to get an idea or give the board an idea where we're heading. And at this point, we'd be down a hundred and thirty thousand in elementary, two twenty high school. At the very bottom of the sheet, you'll see that I've listed Senate Bill two sixty-one, the Data for Achievement Payment. That, through the special session, they extended the Senate Bill two sixty-one's plan to identify that as a funding component, but not to fund it. So what that means is it's, we don't receive this revenue, but we get to include it when we plug it into the funding formula. So what we did with that this year is we planned to cover that cost through year-end savings. This is sort of what's reflected here as well. We're not backing it out of, or adding it to the negative balance, but at least demonstrating what that looks like. I have a couple other spreadsheets that maybe I'd put up on the screen real quick. We do have a metastas, I had a couple other spreadsheets, but I, you know, we'll have opportunities to go through those as well. Page thirty-eight, there's quite a bit of information on this spreadsheet, but it's, what it shows is our revenue sources from this year to next year, to next year in a projected standpoint. If you go down on the left side, under the revenue descriptions, you'll see the base levy and the over-base levy listed together about six lines down, they begin. This represents our local taxpayers' funding obligation. The base levy is obviously our local taxpayer's support of the base budget, which we're compelled to approve as a school district. And then the over-base levy is the voted portion of the funding for our general fund budget. If you follow those numbers across from this year to next year, there's a projection in the elementary that the base levy would go down, and then the over-base would go up based upon that voted levy. This is a projection, it's a number we'll keep looking at. It's going to depend a bit on guaranteed tax base aid that you'll see on line three. And if you recall, when we went through the last legislative session, the legislature pulled out state block grants that are down about line ten and natural resource development payments, both were state funding sources. The intent is, is to increase guaranteed tax base aid, that GTB, over the next three years. So this is my estimate of where that would go, based upon some of what OPI is saying. It's a twelve percent bump. Assuming that statewide bump happens, then we would, if we recognize that twelve percent increase, that would directly reduce our base levy. So just sort of information-wise, if I look back to two thousand seventeen, from that point until now, if these estimates held true, our GTB would go up about a million and a half during that same period of time. Our state block grant and natural resource development payment went down a million and a half. And that's the idea, that's the intent, is that there would be a direct offset. So hopefully that carries through. Similar analysis on the high school side, and it's a look, in the high school, we went, this would anticipate a bump of one point four million over those two years in GTB and over that same period of loss of one point six, so it's almost recovering in the high school. The next few pages are graphs that we've updated, and the first on page thirty-nine is a general fund overview, a look at where the general fund budget has gone in the elementary since two thousand ten. It's gone up about ten million dollars. During that period of time, we adopted, we implemented full-time kindergarten, so that was a significant change to our number of students, so that had a positive impact on both the number of students and our general fund budgets. If you jump forward to page, to page forty-one, you'll also see the A and B, our student enrollment numbers. That graph pretty much mirrors our general fund graph, so as our enrollment goes, our general fund goes. Yeah?
I just got a question about the A and B. I know that that's, and I think it's tied up in one of our previous graphs up there, probably under Direct State Aid. Does that number, the value that we get credit or reimbursed for per student, is that tied to a metric that we have any, either control over or that actually changes? I guess, you know, it's more expensive every year, do we, is that in the formula?
It is. So if Burley didn't delete my spreadsheet, or I couldn't show you. Fantastic. Just teasing, but it is. It's a, it's part of that inflationary increase, so the one point eight seven percent is, changes are per A and B entitlement. In the high school, it's seven thousand, it'll go up to seven thousand fifteen. And the, that's for high school students and seventh to eighth grade students. And so that number is for the first student in the door, it's a dollar amount, seven thousand five dollars, and for each student that they're after, it's reduced by fifty cents up to the eight-hundredth student, and then it stays static after that.
Nice, simple formula.
Yeah. The elementary has a similar calculation. It's, it also goes down for, by twenty cents for the first thousand, for each student up to a thousand, and that is close to six thousand per student.
And just a quick follow-up on that. When you're looking at our projections and obviously it's pretty easy to, actually it's not that easy, because we have feeder schools, to make an assumption as, you know, how the high school population's gonna change as we go through. Have you, or do we, do you look at some of those projections that we were talking about? Or I guess where do you get, how do you guess how many kindergarten students are gonna come in the door?
We do, we look at those. But the way that it works with school funding is that you, our enrollment numbers for this year dictate budgets for next year. But if we look beyond two thousand nineteen into two thousand twenty, which we have done, we look at the demographic numbers that show the kindergarten students coming in or that age of population. I know Dave has, and I have, done periodic checks against the demographic numbers, just to kind of see where we're at, and they hit and miss, but it's, it's pretty good. I mean, overall, it, it does track pretty well what the demographic information is. So then, back to the high school on page forty-nine, just, or forty, sorry, the, this is the general fund look in the high school as compared to the elementary. It's sort of finally coming out of very flat, static budgets over the past six years. And if you jump to page forty-two, you can look at the, a very different A and B or enrollment picture for the high school. Sort of a deep nosedive that's through two thousand sixteen, that's recovering, and the impacts on the general fund are pretty remarkable because of that. Pages forty-three and forty-four compare the increase in the budget to the voted levies. So in the elementary, on page forty-three, you can see the years we ran levies, and sorry, they're not in color, it's a little easier to look at in color, but the one of note is two thousand eleven, two thousand ten, eleven, where the, let me see, no, I'm sorry, in the elementary, it's, yeah, it's pretty, pretty much relatively small levies and fairly good-sized increases in budget, and some of those increases do, well, no, they don't, because I think full-time kindergarten was two thousand seven, I want to say. So then, but there's, we've ran a levy last year of eight hundred and four thousand, this year would be two seventy-two. Prior to that, we didn't run a levy the previous two years. And then in fifteen, two thousand fourteen, we ran a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar levy and none prior to the previous two years. The high school, we haven't had a levy, and this is on page forty-four, since two thousand eleven. From an operating standpoint, I think last year, this, last year, for this year was the first opportunity to have a levy in the high school, and we didn't run one. This is the two thousand eleven, twelve, if you look at that levy, in that year was seven hundred and ten thousand, and our budgets went up by forty thousand. This was during a period of deep decline in A and B, and fortunately, we were able to pass this operating levy and maintain, basically, it was to maintain budget capacity and similar budget authority. So it was, that was a big deal. After that year, we didn't use the levy that was passed for that one year. Then the recovery meant our base budgets increased, and we didn't need to use as much of that operating levy. And that happens, it's just how the formula works. So that's, that's sort of the update. I do have additional information, and we walked through with the principals yesterday that, sort of about school funding and a little bit different look at the levies, the base budgets, and the mill and tax impact that we can, we can look at at a different time. Unless you want me to pull that up.
Oh, Burley deleted it. Do any trustees have any more questions for Pat on that, the budget predictions? Then we'll move on to the bond expenditure update on page forty-five.
All right, thanks. So the page forty-five is a similar format that we've seen for our bond expenditures. The top half is, shows the secondary bond expenditures. Bottom right of the column, we've expended through December nineteen thousand, nineteen million, excuse me, with fifty million remaining. And then on the high, elementary- And then on the high, elementary side, we've expended 38.8 million through December. And down near the bottom, there's a tab that shows the expenditures by various category with soft costs being our architect, engineering, expenditures for those various projects. The, what else is in the packet that we haven't looked at before? I put on, on your spot, on your, on the table in front of you is, is a, is a budget, a bond project schedule. This is something that, that Holting has, has put together for us. For each of our bond projects, on the left side, it shows the duration of the project and the start and end date of the project. If you look into about the middle, there's a yellow line that represents our, our date. And so through, through January, this is, this represents the, the project completion and where the various projects are to that point. You may need a little bit of a magnifying glass on the left side to look at the data. But it's, it's, it's very helpful to kind of take that overall look at where we're at. It's, as Burley has mentioned before, it's, it's kind of amazing, we're getting to the final point in selection of architects and engineers and, and contractors. We still have a number to go, but, but you can see for the projects that we haven't started near the bottom, those, those will represent those projects that, where we're either just in the process of selecting architects and engineers and, or will be doing so this time next year. That's all I have on that.
Any questions for Pat on, on that item? If you had a chance to kind of look that over. I think if, if you have questions later, you can ask Pat or Mike, Mark as well.
Absolutely.
You can ask Mike. Okay, so our next agenda item is the technology. No, it's the general fund update from Pat.
All right, so the general fund update, this is our quarterly update, page 47 and 48. And a couple of expenditures that, that we're keeping an eye on at this point in time are our substitute expenditures. If you look down the left on page 48, you'll see that listed there with an object code of 120. And then on, also our field trip, student transportation, travel costs on the high school side. That's on the, down below the salary and benefit expenditure lines that, on the high school side, that's listed right there. So otherwise, we're, we're moving along well, where expected at this point in time.
Does anybody have questions for Pat on that agenda item? Okay, so Pat will now provide the technology fund update on page 49.
Yeah, sorry to keep going on you, but this is the last one, I think, for me. The, so, so Burley bailed you out. Way to go, Burley. The tech fund report, Ray wasn't able to, to make it. So if the, nothing very remarkable, nothing remarkable to, to mention on this expenditure report. And I think that what, what Ray will have in store are some equipment purchases here in the next few months. So that portion of the budget will be in front of the board in the form of requests for approval of purchases of various equipment items. And that'll be similar on the, on the high school side.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of get an update. So we voted a few years ago for these tech levies.
Right.
Are they ongoing forever or do they end?
They're ongoing. So they represent a perpetual, permanent levy only in the tech fund.
Does any of the trustees have any other questions? Public comment, questions? Okay, so our next agenda item is the transportation fund update from Burley on page 51.
So yeah, we're, we're looking pretty good right now this time of year. We got about four months in, with about six months to go, and we're sitting at about that 40% expended, expended so far. So the, the high school and the elementary are pretty much kind of where we, where we're expecting to be right now. So it's pretty, any questions I can answer, right?
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Didn't expect me to let it go, did you? I gotta ask questions. Burley, just a quick question. I know that in the years past, the snow removal's always been the big question. Have we, what was it, two years ago that we had the one that just kind of emptied the coffers? Or was that last year? That was two years ago, right?
Well, it's every year.
I know, but, but I guess my, my only question to that end was, was going to be, how do you plan for that? And if you have extra at the end of the year, what do you do with it? Or do you just carry it over?
Well, we, we, what we have budgeted, we never have enough leftovers. We usually look at other.
The other way around, right?
It is. We look at other, other funding sources to help offset those costs. And over the last couple of years, it's been the building reserve to help offset those costs. And we'll get into the building reserve here shortly, but there's not a lot, a lot left in there to help us out much longer.
Thank you, I think. Let you know.
So I guess we, the trustee Smith's question was to the building reserve. But I actually have a question on, just a quick question for Pat, I think. Can you tell us briefly how the money gets into these, these funds?
So, so for the, the tech fund, which I, I talked about, there's, there are two technology levies in the elementary, an $850,000 annual levy. And then in the high school, a $750,000 annual levy. Those are local levies following a vote of the taxpayers in 2011, I want to say, is when that was held. And on the transportation side, the funding in the transportation budget comes from, primarily from the local permissive levy. And for that fund, along with the building reserve fund and the retirement fund, we will be in front of the board talking about those permissive levies next month. And as a board, you'll have to adopt or approve of the estimates of, of what those permissive levies will look like. We did it for the first time last year as a result of some legislative changes to Senate Bill 307. Also in the transportation fund, from a revenue standpoint, are state appropriations and state block grants. So if you look on page 51, and I'm, I'm glad you brought this up because I was going to talk about this when I talked about the, the projections for next year. The special legislative session eliminated state block grants in the transportation fund, starting next year. So if you look on page 51, the state block grant is down line five, 148,353. That piece of funding will be eliminated next year, 2020, 2021. The state appropriation was reduced this year by about 16.3%. That's the piece of the state funding there that's 210. And then it's going to be reduced by another 16.3% next year. The combination of the reduction in state appropriation both those years and then the block grant elimination for the elementary totals $507,000 over that period of time. And we have an obligation to cover that, that shortfall in revenue without permissively levying the local taxpayers. So we have to cover, cover that burden with our reserves, with fund transfers or with reduction in expenditures in those, in those budgets. Our reserves in the elementary are 197,000, so we have a $310,000 shortfall in that, in that fund, which we would need to pick up through transfers from other budgeted funds. And we, this is, happens through 2021. But the main point is, as part of this legislative special session, is that we don't pick up that burden with, with the permissive levies. On page 51, the high, secondary piece is also there. You'll see the block grant at 73, 849. That will be gone next year. And then they have the similar reduction in the appropriation. The total, the exact amount isn't known, it's more, it's when the appropriation is known in June, then we take 16% of that and that's reduced. So the high school side, our reduction there is close to 200, it's close to 300,290, I want to say. But we have a reserve in the, in the high school side that's at that amount. It's short by 6,000. So we have enough in the reserve in the secondary side to pick up the shortfall. So it'll be the secondary that will be working on covering that deficit over the next three years. But thanks for bringing that up, I meant to mention that. Building reserve side from a, should I jump into that one for revenue? So the building reserve in the elementary and the high school is funded with voted levies. And this spring is the last of those, the levies. So the elementary, we had two reserves that expired. And in the high school, the, the final reserve will be, will be done after this, this spring. So those were voted levies of varying terms and amounts, annual amounts. I'm just going to look and see if I could identify the amount. I think the, the high school was 450. And then the elementary, there were two that have already expired. And they, yeah, the high school was a seven-year, 450,000 per year levy that, that was authorized by vote in 2011. So that, it's done this year. And then the other two in the elementary are also gone. And it, it's also a good note on the high school side, you don't see the revenue sources here. But Senate Bill 261, reduced by 47% the state block grants revenue in these two funds. We were getting about 80,000 elementary and 184,000 high school. The special session made those reductions permanent at full amount. So they obliterated all of the block grants in the elementary building reserves, in both building reserves as well. So that's 184,000 high school and about 80,000 elementary from a revenue source. And when we've received those in the building reserve, we've built them up. They largely form our carryover balance. So when we look at, at, at balances, that would be an area that, that we would look at to help support maintenance costs while we don't run, when we don't have a, or a building reserve levying place. But it's also a, a balance that we've used sporadically and we've always come to the board when we've expended money from those carryover funds.
Any questions for Pat on that? And then Burley, were we finished? Or did you want to talk about the building reserve fund update on the expenditure side?
Yeah, I'll just touch base on a couple of the expenditures. So these are, these are expenditures we've had over the last quarter, which are, are pretty small when we look at our average over the building reserve, as Pat was saying. The elementary reserve was, was budgeted for $500,000 a year for five years. And we're operating on quite a bit less than that. Of course, the bond has, has helped exceptionally to take care of a lot of the capital project needs. But the day-to-day operations is what the building reserve is used for. And we make it, we make it spread as, as much as we can. Couple of the bigger, bigger items on the elementary, the business building server room. So we had the air conditioner go down in there in the server room. Of course, that room is very hot and created quite the nightmare for Hatton. I don't believe Ray was here yet, but Hatton, I'm sure, lost some sleep over that. So we, we had, we put in a brand-new system over there with, with, it's actually, there's two different units in there now, so we have some redundancy. If, if one does go down, we were able to put a mini-split air conditioning system in there, which is a little less expensive, but gives us a little bit of a fail-safe. And then we did, on the high school side, which is a seven-year reserve, budgeted on $450,000 a year, expires in June, as, as Pat alluded to. And a couple of things we, that I'll, I'll make notice on. Again, the business building air conditioner, we had to split that between high school and elementary. And then the removable wall at Big Sky High School, those are the big accordion walls that we have between those, between the cafeteria. Those were original and, and were creating quite a safety issue, so we repaired those. But all in all, we're, we're doing pretty well on the building reserve, making it last as long as we can. And, any questions?
Any questions, sir Burley?
So making the building reserve last as long as it can, this is, I'm sorry, we've had a lot of spreadsheets, but 500,000 and it's a permissive levy?
It's a voted.
It's a voted levy, which is typically for how long of a?
It depends. The high, the elementary had two that expired on different dates. One was a 505-year, the other was a 376,000 10-year, seven-year, something like that. And the high schools, the, and those expired over the last five years, they've been gone. The high school expires just this year, spring of 2018. So that one was 450,000 per year, seven, seven-year levy.
Okay. And so this amount that's in it now, this is expiring this June, so this is what there is as of right now?
It's not, because it doesn't reflect the carryover. So what Burley, Burley is showing from a balance is, or are you showing the carryover?
I'm not showing the carryover.
Yeah, I didn't think so. So this is, this is the allocation on the portion that was voted, the 450. And has accumulated over time. The part that was the school block grant funds that we, we just put into carryover and, and show when we adopt budgets in August is not reflected in this because Burley doesn't control it. So he's looking at what he manages. The carryover part really is what the board manages because we, it wasn't budgeted as part of that levy. It became a block grant payment from the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we just having questions or can I say something also?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I just, this conversation tonight, I think we keep finding things that it's like, oh, that would be good for a work session. Because a question that we do get pretty often is, so with all these beautiful new buildings, are we budgeting properly so that we don't get ourselves in this situation again in 40 years of deferred maintenance? And that's exactly what's going on here with this relatively small fund to maintain all of these buildings. So making a plan that really addresses that in a way that people can feel confident about protecting all their investments is a good idea.
Trustee Smith?
I, I guess just to make sure I understand what, what Grace is saying or to follow up. Is, this looks like something that because of, I remember when we did them seven years ago, we did them at the same time. We had a five-year and a seven-year. And we knew when we were going to the bond, we planned, we did not plan on. And back then, we, what we would do is we, at the end of the five years, we would get a new one and get a new number and do it for another five years or seven years. And clearly, when these expired, we didn't do that, as Burley said, for the bond. Clearly, it looks like at some point in the future, we're going to have to go back and start that process again. But in the meanwhile, we're not burdening our tax base with, with paying just because we can. I, I guess is, I mean, but we're, our philosophy seems to be, we've got the money, the, the bond is taking care of a, a lot of these things, or addressing a lot of these issues and, and getting new equipment for the most part. But do you see where I'm going, Mark?
Yes, and actually, Burley and I had a conversation about this on Monday, yesterday, in our meeting. He will do a projection of runout for the remainder of the bond and that will help influence when and if we would have to approach the public for these kinds of things. Many of the items that have been addressed through the building reserves are items that would not normally be borne by the general fund budget in that, you know, it's repairs that might not be contemplated, sprinkler systems in buildings that go down or some revisions to plumbing or electrical supply because of change in use of space. So it's nice to have the flexibility to do that. We have some funds still available for a runout, but you're right, we do need to do some long-range planning.
And, and just to reflect back on the impact on the taxpayer, when we, when it came to them with the, the bond. it came to them with the, the bonds, and we said, okay, it's going to be twenty bucks a month, or whatever it is, that did not take into account the decrease due to the building reserve funds sunsetting?
It didn't, because the ballot will reflect what an estimate of the levy would be solely from that.
Right.
And even when we ran the building reserves, you, you, you made the point that those were renewals. So each time that we've ran a building reserve, we were replacing an expiring one-
Right.
-in, in the last couple rounds of that. And, and knowing we've gone through a number of projects that with the bond, as, as, as Mark mentioned, what, what the operating maintenance burden is going to be, looks different. But there are still things that, that aren't covered by the bond that would be covered by a maintenance burden, and, including equipment. And the building reserve is a, intended by the statute to also be an equipment, a funding device to make purchase of equipment.
So I think, Mike, one of the items that you're trying to illuminate here is that if you consider the comments, comments Pat made with regard to the general fund projections, and again, it's a little bit early. But if you look at the high school district and look at the base levy and the over-base levy, the net effect of the changes is a reduction in the local levy to the taxpayers. And then when you add into that the building reserve that's going off the tax rolls, even if the voters support a levy request for a general fund operating levy, there's potential that there's a net reduction in their tax bill because of these other changes that are occurring.
Trustee Newbold? Just maybe one last question, or maybe two. Can anyone refresh my recollection as to, of the overall bond amounts, how much of it constituted deferred maintenance, percentage or dollar?
I got that information in my office.
Okay.
But I could get that information for you. I don't have it.
Okay. And what I guess what I'm getting at is just, I think it's a pretty significant number. And I'm just wondering if any analysis was ever done as to how we got to that point in the first place?
Well, I, I, what I will say is, most projects we've ran so far have the mechanical, which, and the roofing, which is kind of really, the majority of deferred maintenance is occurring in our bond projects, have accounted for about forty to forty-five percent of the total project construction budget for each project. So they're large, they're large projects. And a lot of that has to do with boiler systems that, that are fifty, sixty, seventy, and even older than that sometimes. And, and have created a continual maintenance issue for the building. Roofs were the same way. When we've, we've done building reserve projects, we've put some roof projects into our, into the building reserve, and we've put some minor remodels in the reserve. We got a grant for a boiler system for Lewis and Clark a few years ago. But they're large, those are mainly large capital projects, require bond-type, type initiatives. I mean, you look at the expenses, I mean, the roof at, see, at, at Big Sky and Hellgate and Sentinel were all a million-dollar roof. And we didn't even roof it all. We only roofed the portions of it. So it's quite expensive and quite large. And, you know, our trades guys do a great job, I think, maintaining them and keeping them running. It's interesting because my plumbers are now working with new equipment, which they haven't worked on in a long time because they're used to the old equipment. And so there's a, there's a little bit of a retrain there with some of the folks, including my electrician. So it's kind of an interesting dynamic of what we're going through as a district. And it's really, it's, it's a fun dynamic. But, you know, it's, I think, we do everything we can to make our equipment last as long as we possibly can to help taxpayers. They have to replace these things every, every twenty years. And in my opinion, boilers should be lasting forty, fifty years, sixty years, because they were really actually built for that. I'm not going to say that about boilers today, of today, because I'm not sure. But boilers of yesterday were built for that. And so I, I feel like we're probably right within that timeframe of replacing. And I think you see it nationwide, doing all schools are going in and starting to do this remodel because we had this big push of educational facilities in the forties and fifties. And so now we're kind of seeing all those, all those buildings come to the end. So I'm, I'm not sure what we do, or if there's even really a possibility of, of keeping that from happening forty or fifty, sixty years from now. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
No, it does. It's, I, I mean, we fund the day-to-day repairs, but at some point, these big systems have to eventually get replaced. And I guess I'm just contemplating whether there's a, a way to save for these wholesale replacements of systems within our budgeting framework, which is highly complicated, I realize.
And generally speaking, we don't have any savings accounts like that. We have some building funds and others that we can put some revenue in, but not to the extent that we're referencing here. And I think Burley's point's well-taken. We're going to have twenty buildings with heat delivery systems that are relatively new or have been remodeled. And we don't expect that we're going to be doing replacements on those, hopefully in the remainder of any of our careers. They should last us another forty years. So it's really hard to project what we could do through a building reserve or something to prevent us from being at this same place forty years from now, because forty years from now, you will have eighteen forty-year-old boilers.
Are there any other comments on this agenda item? Okay, so our, our next one on, in finances is number seven, Roman numeral seven, and that's Burley, and that's to approve an additional bus route. And this is an elementary action item. Burley?
Yeah, so this is a special needs route that is for Porter Middle School. And we've had, really, it's not going to come up. It's just thinking. All right. So this is what I, this is what I thought was more important than what Pat had to offer. So this is, this is kind of a report we get for special needs, fit families, preschool and leveling. And, and the numbers that it, that it has, do you need this?
Oh, I can.
Okay. That's probably good right there. They could probably read, read that. And, and what we've seen over the last, this is kind of just give you a little bit of a history. We've seen over the last probably six years, seven years, is where we end the year with this total number. So if you look over to the far right, currently, we have four hundred and twenty-three kids that are being either leveled preschool, fit families, or special needs. Typically, what happens is, at the end of the year, we almost start the next year with that same number. And then it, it just, it never goes down. It continues to increase. And this kind of gives you where we started. We started at three hundred and seven, and we're over a hundred kids, more than what we started the school year with. And if you look just from December to January, and this is kind of what put us a little bit over the edge, is you look at, there's a thirty, there's thirty student swing there. And most, about half of that, or a little ha, over half is, is fit families. So what hap, we, we're, by law, we're required to transport fit families. And it's, it's virtually, well, it is, a door-to-door service. So if you're a Lewis and Clark student, that's your home school, and you become a fit family.
Can you, can you define fit family?
As families in transition. And, and you move into the Hawthorne as a temp, for temporary housing. We bus you from that house, wherever it is, by Hawth, in the Hawthorne District, over to Lewis and Clark, to and from school every day, if they choose. We look at different avenues. We look at reimbursing the parent for mileage, if the parent just wants to transport them. But we're required to offer transportation and provide transportation if, if, if needed. And so we've had, we've had kind of a bigger bump over that last month. And to be honest, our projections are, 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 we're figuring it's going to continue to increase over, throughout the year. So that's why we're required, and a lot of those kids fall into the Porter area. And we've had, we had, what made this, this route come, come to the top of the list is, we have, we had seven kids, we were not able to get on a bus. We were jam-packed everywhere. And we need to get those seven kids to, to the bus. So what Beach did, and Mark alluded to this a little bit earlier, with that TransFinder system, they're able to look at how we can utilize different routes to pull kids into and re, and adjust buses rather than just keep the old same ordinary route. We can pull them off and, and grab kids where needed. And that's one thing that Beach does a really good job of, is, is doing everything they possibly can before they say, hey, I think we need a new route. And then myself, or Terry Phelan, who is our new, he's been around for about five months, he's our transportation supervisor, which you were going to meet tonight, but he had to go to a training. We go back to Beach and we, we make them dive in all again, right in front of us, and, and look at every other aspect we can do to get kids to school without having to create this bus route. And, and so we, we try to really validate that it's really the right decision to come, because we understand buses, buses are expensive. And, and Pat talked a little bit about the block grant going away. So we're, it's very, we're very conscious of what, what the costs are. But we want to make sure kids are at school, learning as well.
So as this new route is created, as Burley alluded to, TransFinder assists them in identifying that they could create this new bus route and pull from a variety of different buses four or five students. So what it does is not only gets these students to Porter, but it also creates capacity on about five other buses, so that we can absorb some of that increase as it occurs. And we're not back here next month asking for yet another bus route. That's not to say we won't before the end of the year. As Burley said, the numbers just seem to climb almost astronomically. But that's the kind of manipulation that's available, given the TransFinder program.
Are there any trustee questions on this, or for Burley or Mark? Okay. So we've been entertaining a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the proposed new bus route. Motion by trustee Newbold, second by trustee Smith. Now, are there any trustee comments? Oh, trustee Smith?
I, I guess this just rolls back into everything that we were talking about before, when we were discussing transportation. But, and I know that there's initiatives with the, the city, you know, in, in, in addressing fit families. Are we, I guess this is more a question, I apologize. But are we working with the city from a, a, a different aspect as opposed to just, you know, moving them around? I mean, I, I guess I'm not really sure what, what the option would be. But it, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm looking down, down the road. Do we, I mean, we can continue to do this, but it doesn't seem to be solving the problem, I guess. I don't know if you have the answer to that, Burley. It's maybe not even a question for you.
You know, I think we've, we've talked briefly about this, and Mark can chime in, and maybe some of McKinney-Vento experience can talk to us too. But with fit families, we haven't, mainly because of the McKinney-Vento Act that require us to transport fit families. And, and so if, if you guys want to chime in and speak to that a little bit, but go with Mark.
As you alluded to, the community has a ten-year plan to end homelessness and an active committee. They're engaged in their work, and certainly, we would love to see that come to fruition. The reality is, federal regulations dictate right now that while those students are considered homeless or at risk of homelessness, they feel it's really important to maintain that continuous connection with their home school. So we are obligated to transport those students back to their home schools regardless of what temporary housing or other housing arrangements may be made in the community. We have not, as a community, made a huge dent to date in the homelessness. But it's a situation we continue to work with. And again, Julie oversees McKinney-Vento with Trish Kirsten, and it's something we're engaged with routinely.
I was just going to clarify that that home school is only applicable for the remainder of that school year. And then if the parent, you know, it becomes a question of out-of-area after that. So we only provide transportation that first year.
Megan's shaking her head. Megan?
No.
No, you provide transportation for the period of homelessness.
Oh, sorry, through fifth grade. And, well, as the period of homelessness, but if that becomes a substantial, considered a home, and not temporary housing, then that becomes their home school, that area.
That's what I mean, is through the period of homelessness.
Right.
At whatever point they are considered to be no longer homeless, then yes, they're in that boundary area of where they're living.
So if their home school during this time in transition is Cold Springs-
Right.
-we, until that situation, until they're no longer a fit family, I guess, we, we continue to-
Correct.
-serve them. Right. Well, I, I definitely think that's, I don't think we should do it just because it's the law, but I, I think it's an important thing to, I'm sure there's lots of benefits for the kids too.
Yeah. I would also add that the obligation now extends to foster care students, too. And so there's not any mechanism, unfortunately, under the law right now, unlike McKinney-Vento, about sharing transportation costs. But that's hoping, we'll be getting some guidance from OPI about how those costs are going to be shared between schools and DPHHS. But until that time, they're basically saying, you have to get these kids to school. And so I think that's an additional cost that schools, I think, are bearing right now, is that federal law says you have to make sure that they go to the school that's in their best interest.
Thanks.
Trustee Decker?
This is just a question, there's always so much to learn. But with this situation, does it ever happen that kids are crossing boundaries out of actually our district in some way, into one of our feeder districts, all the time? And then we're transporting kids with our buses to like target range school, or?
So-
No.
In that situation, districts are supposed to coordinate about how those costs get shared. Because if the student, yes, should be a Hellgate Elementary student, but is now in foster, or homeless in Missoula County Public Schools boundaries, and they decide that the school, the student needs to go to Paxton Elementary, the default under the law is that it's a shared cost. So that Hellgate Elementary and MCPS split the cost. They can reach another arrangement under the law, but there, that's the default.
Are there any other questions on this issue? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the additional bus route, as described, as an elementary action item. So, oh, do we have public comment? So all elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. And so our finally, final financial topic is from Burley to authorize engagement of a Meadow Hill Middle School GCCM contractor. And again, that's an elementary action item.
Yeah, thanks. So I've explained the, the selection processes of this many times, and how time-consuming it is. So I do want to thank the committee, Superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, Julie Robitaille, Principal, and Principal Chris Stevens, that, you know, it takes a long, a long couple days to get, to get through this process. But it's, it's a neat process, it's a fun process. So we are, we are recommending to the board that we select Langless and Associates for Meadow Hill Middle School. And we are very excited, we are very excited to work with them. Again, they, they recently have received Sentinel as well, so.
Do any trustees have questions for Burley on this item? Okay. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the, the engagement of Langless to be our GCCM on the Meadow Hill project? Moved by trustee Kendall. Second by trustee Decker. Any public, you know, any trustee discussion? Any public comment? Trustee Smith, are you concerned?
I may abstain, just because I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, trustee Smith is pretty closely related to the construction industry, so he tends to abstain on these items. We still, we still have a quorum. Yeah. So all trustee, just, elementary trustees in favor of this, please raise your hand. And that's all elementary trustees, except trustee Smith. Who has abstained? Okay, so we, well, let's move into personnel policy and negotiation. Is everybody okay? Just keep going? All right. Okay, so our next item under B1 is to approve the elementary school calendar for eighteen, calendar year eighteen nineteen, and it's an elementary action item. And Dave Rott will explain it to us. It's on page fifty-four.
Yes, I mean, and I'll give you some background. It'll actually cover both the elementary and the high school. So each year, we put together a committee comprised of, I tried to get representatives from elementary, middle school, and high school, both teacher-certified staff, as well as administrators, and MMCEO representatives. And what we do is, we get together and come up with a calendar for the next school year. What you have before you in both the elementary and the high school- What you have before you in both the elementary and the high school is the product of those meetings which occurred. What we try to take into account, we try to coordinate with the university, the spring break, we have the parameter, we are required by law to get 1,080 hours in for our students from, and I'm trying to remember where the break is, I think K3 is 720, right, and then fourth grade up is the 1,080 hours. So we plug in the days, we talk about professional development, we look at semesters and quarters, we look at breaks, we look at the things that arise, and then come up with the final product. And what you're actually looking at tonight is, I think, version six of, on each of those calendars. We had a very, very exciting discussions this year about calendars and a lot of debate and a lot of reflective thought about what our calendar should look like and what would meet the best interest of our district and school. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have. I guess we can focus on the elementary and then move to high school.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, I guess, oh, yes, we do.
I'm trying to remember what calendars in years past have looked like, but this one does seem to look a little bit different maybe from years past. Are we going later but starting at the same time and getting a longer holiday?
Yeah, I can address that. So it's an interesting thing. So there's, once there's the product of the calendar, so once we start having Christmas and New Year's fall, Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, it creates that kind of weird gap where you end up putting two year, I mean, two week holiday breaks in the middle. And when that happens, you tend to extend it into the second week of June. So that happens fairly regularly. This year that wouldn't have been necessary, but the committee decided as a whole that they thought having that two week over the break was important. So that's why you're looking at that June 13th date. The other thing you might notice is that we've traditionally had a professional development day in September and a professional development day in April. We still have those. What happened is the September date moved into August, the thought being that it would be good to offer that professional development opportunities for both certified and classified staff before the school year gets started rather than three weeks into it. And then likewise, we took the April date and moved it up to February. So those dates didn't disappear, they just moved to different spots.
Trustee Decker.
Is that a great time for teachers to attend training sessions, right, when they're also getting their classrooms set up and getting things all organized for the school year? Is it, do we offer as much in the way of scheduled training during those particular days in August? Curious?
Well, that's a great question. So, and there was a lot of debate on that. If you note, like in the August, there is a professional development day. The other two days are the ones that we would typically have, one which we call the no-touch day, which allows teachers to work in their classrooms and get everything prepared, and the other day being where they, we would do a district potential meetings and that the principals would often meet with staff. So the way that was set up, this on both the calendars, was that the professional development day would be Friday, the 24th, though I know in speaking with teaching and learning and with the regional directors, there was a discussion maybe about being flexible with those professional development days. However, we would maintain, you know, the no-touch day for teachers immediately preceding it. Also, I would state, you know, when I served as a principal, and I think it's pretty common, a lot of principals actually do schedule professional development days into August prior to the school year because that's a real valuable time to do the planning and talking about what you're going to do. So the thing we wanted to be cognizant of with that, when that happens, it's important for the MEA for teachers to attend the statewide conferences in August. So if principals schedule, I mean, October, I'm sorry. So if principals are scheduling professional development days otherwise in August, it sometimes means that they're not attending those. So we wanted to be cognizant of that balance as well.
Trustee Newbold.
Dave, can you share the thought process behind why the two weeks at the winter break was important? I'm just thinking from a parent perspective, two weeks is kind of a long time to have kids out of school. I don't know that they're necessarily losing ground per se for, just in a two-week time period, but.
There was, you know, there was a lot of discussion about that. I mean, I think it was just the committee's consensus that that was an important thing that they wanted to do. I mean, the thought was about how does that affect kids and does, was a discussion, but then the recognition that while it may not occur this year, it will happen the following year and probably in three or four successive years, we'll have that two-week break just by the very nature of where the holidays fall. So the thought was, we have done that before, we would do it then, and then as you extend into June, that you're still going to then having students have a longer school year regard, they're still going to be making that up, we're not losing any educational opportunities.
Trustee Decker.
Do we feed kids at all during longer breaks like that?
I don't believe we do, no.
Trustee Kendall.
Just out of curiosity, since this is, since 2018 is a presidential election year, has there ever been discussion about having Election Day be a day off as it is for many state, local and federal employees? Or not federal, state and local, I guess.
That actually was discussed, we decided not to, but there was a conversation about maybe, because that, as you note, tends to fall during the conference week, and there was questions, actually somewhat of not just that Election Day, but having all the people coming into your schools during those times when we have students in and how that might present conflict. Again, it was, it was actually heavily debated and it was brought up, but it was decided to stick with the more traditional schedule that we've had.
I guess as trustees, it's a little difficult to have to vote yea or nay. Is there any interest in seeing alternative calendars from the trustees before we vote? Go ahead, Mike.
Just out of curiosity, or as I consider that question, this being the sixth version of the schedule, what's our time to get this nailed down?
I don't know that we have a specific timeline, but obviously the sooner that we get it done, the more that families can plan. I know that, for example, teaching and learning will need to try to schedule speakers or events, and so the sooner we get that done, the more opportunity the district has to prepare for professional development opportunities for teachers, that parents in the community have an opportunity to plan what they're going to do. So I would say sooner rather than later. I see Mark's hand up.
Yes, I've been in contact with our partner K8 districts to discuss calendar and their boards will want to take action based on our calendar dates. And so they're chomping at the bit also to get those days identified. And again, there's the overlap in many of those districts with their elementary students and high school age siblings, so that's important to them. In terms of just timeline for our district, we do get a lot of inquiries from parents, especially those who may have shared custody and who are out of state, who are starting to make plans and custody arrangements. So the earlier we adopt the calendars, the better.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think maybe in future we can maybe ask, to hear about it sooner and hear, maybe just find out from parents and things, how that long break works, how, because truly if you count them, there's 15 full days, is that, let's just get some feedback from people on if that's too long before we set next year's.
We can do that.
Yeah. So do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the elementary calendar? Moved by trustee Kendall, is there a second? Second by trustee Smith? Any trustee discussion? Oh, Mike.
Well, I guess I'm really glad to hear Mark talk that he's been in touch with the feeder districts. I was going to ask that, appreciate you saying that. And it does sound like that the teachers and the administration put a lot of work into this. I like what you said too, Diane, but it sounds like, it sounds like a lot of thought's been put into this. Nothing's ever going to be perfect, but it's going to, I support it.
Trustee Decker.
I am, I'll also be curious to hear feedback about how the professional development stuff goes over the next year because certainly a lot of the initiatives and projects and things that this board has approved have heavy components of professional development involved with them and really don't have an impact across the district until people all go through that training. And so whether that's, whether this calendar structure best supports that, I'd love to hear how that all plays back.
Anything else from the trustees? Any public comment? Oh, here comes Melanie, our public.
Melanie Charleston, President Missoula Education Association. I did sit in on the calendar committee along with Dave Rod and the other members. Had incredibly robust discussion about a variety and went through many scenarios. If you look at next year, January 1, will they be on that Wednesday? And coming back for a two-day post that is more than likely not the best option either. So we had to have those discussions. As I think of our work with new hires, I'm kind of excited about that August date. That gives them three days on top of their new hire, some new hire training day to work with colleagues, to hear about initiatives and to kind of hit the ground running prior to those students coming in. So, so yes, I think we need to see and get some feedback on that and how that shifts, but that might assist in those new hires coming in settling as well as seasoned educators coming back. So just another thought on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Any other public comment? So all trustees in favor of adopting the presented elementary, all elementary trustees, the elementary calendar, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Our next item then is the same, it's the high school calendar. Is there anything different to Dave or?
No, it's, if you look at the actual calendars, there's slight variation differences and that has always been there, and that's because of when semesters break versus trimesters, and so there'll be different records. The days are this, the amount of days are the exact same, but sometimes there's additional days off that are different. For, I guess I'm rambling here. For example, in elementary, we have parent-teacher conferences that have the half and the full day where we don't have that in high school. So we have conference days in high school that are different and don't always correspond with what we do in the elementary, but the net effect is the exact same.
And I guess just to note, these are for the three major high schools, Big Sky, Sentinel, Hellgate, Seeley Swan, and Willard will come later.
My hope is that the next meeting that we would have, that we would have both, that we'd have the preschool, the Willard, and the Seeley Swan calendars in front of you. I know that I contacted all the principals and when we formalize this, they'll have a format or a template to use, so we make sure that we do something that is similar for everybody and it doesn't cause conflict. Then I'll come to you with those three proposed calendars.
Are there any trustee questions for Dave on this issue? All right, do we have a motion to adopt the secondary calendar as presented? Moved by trustee Duggar, second. Second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion on this calendar? Is there any public, did you want to comment, Marina, since you're in high school? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of adopting the high school calendar as presented for the three major urban high schools, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, and then our next personnel item is to approve cost-neutral sabbatical leaves. It's an action item for the full board. Dave?
One of the opportunities that's afforded to all of our certified staff is an opportunity to apply for sabbatical leaves. And during sabbatical leaves, a teacher presents a plan to a committee comprised of three teachers and administrator, and I'm thinking there's another third component to that, but a principal, three teachers, and a designee of the superintendent. The purpose of sabbaticals is to provide opportunities for teachers to do research, to travel, to do some additional studying for the benefit of the district. That is, when they do their proposal to us and to that committee, the idea is that they would go out, gain new knowledge, bring that new knowledge into the district and use it and share it with others. I think we've had opportunities to have those teachers who've completed sabbaticals come before the school board in years past, and we would be, we'll be continuing that this fall as well. Under the traditional sabbatical scenario, that we would fund teachers on a full sabbatical at two-thirds of their salary, but what we've done in, for quite a few years in succession is what we have called cost-neutral sabbaticals. It's one of the reasons this is coming to a bit later, it's one of those things that we wanted to talk about budgeting, is it even possible to put together a two-thirds sabbatical this year or do we need to look at doing it cost-neutral? So we're coming to you today with a recommendation for continuing cost-neutral sabbaticals for the following year. I want to emphasize that a cost-neutral sabbatical does not mean that a teacher is not, that's on sabbatical is not getting paid. It simply means that what is done is when they've been approved of that, you take their salary, the teacher that was hired salary, deduct that, and when any remaining amount is left, minus insurance contributions the teacher gets. So it's not a, the cost to the district is zero, but the teacher who is on sabbatical, I don't think without, I think without exception, is always receiving some salary from the district. The reason for that is in order to apply for sabbatical, a teacher has to have it at least seven years into the district, so they're further down on both the horizontal and the steps. Traditionally, I think we look at teachers mostly, most of the time they're about a 10-year, 10-years in, and then when we're hiring the replacement teacher for them, they're significantly smaller salaried. So there's usually residual amounts that are available to the teachers on a cost-neutral Last year we approved, we had five people apply for the cost-neutral sabbaticals, two ended up ultimately withdrawing their request. One, we denied the application and that would be because they simply had six years in, not seven years in, and then we did approve two sabbaticals. I think one of them was a mini-sabbatical. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. I know it's a bit confusing.
Any trustee questions about pay?
I'm not sure I understand. In fact, I definitely don't understand the health insurance premium part. Can you explain that? Especially if there are like dependents, family members covered as well?
Okay, so the district makes a contribution for every single employee, 673. So when we're talking about deducting insurance, we're talking about singularly the district contribution. So what would happen in a cost-neutral is the district for every single position pays $673 for, towards the insurance fund. So in a cost-neutral sabbatical, you, so let me just throw out an example. So let's say we had a teacher that had a salary at say $60,000, and then we hire a replacement teacher that's at $40,000. So there's $20,000 remaining. We, the district pays only one section of that 673, so it's kind of a weird the way we've said it. We say the district will pay for the teacher on sabbatical $673, but then that teacher has to pay the $673 contribution for the replacement teacher. That is, then we end up with a zero cost to the district. We're still only making one $673 contribution to the insurance fund.
They both kick out.
They both, yeah, they evened out. So the district is still making that contribution. Then both are eligible for insurance and both would be, both would be required to pay their premium. So for example, if the teacher was, had, was single, they would just be paying their $85 a month premium towards that. If the person that was hired had a whole family and had a $400, that teacher that was hired would pay that $400 premium, not the teacher. It, we're just singularly talking about the district's $673 contribution.
Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion then to, it's an action item, right? A motion to approve the cost-neutral sabbatical leaves for this year? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the cost-neutral sabbatical leaves, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. So now we have our final period of public comment regarding non-agenda items. Is there any public comment? Okay, we're adjourned.